We don't need to do that, but Alex wants to say something first.
Just before we started on a regular agenda meeting tonight, I would ask if you could, if we could indulge one another in a moment of silence. This past week was a remarkable week for first responders around the country, both in West Texas and of course in Boston. So if you could, I think we should all just be appropriate to observe a moment of silence for the fallen and those who are surviving injured. Thank you. As many of you know, of course, we have a volunteer fire company, 24/7 police and EMS that all operate out of this building. And it's just amazing how our first responders put themselves on the line. Even last week, we had a pretty substantial fire in the downtown, the Latrobe Fire Department with teamwork from the Police Department and others involved, Public Works as well. Their remarkable job. Chief Brazili particularly knows a little bit about firefighting and was able to keep, I think, a number of buildings that could have easily suffered much structural damage from having damage because of the teamwork. And not only to the guys here and the gals in Latrobe, but all the other units that responded. I think all the way from Greensburg, I think we had a truck or two coming in from Greensburg. But thanks to the firemen who participated, Joe, Public Works, and again, to the police and the chief of law, did an excellent job saving a lot of property on main and linear streets. So a lot of credit to that. Tonight, of course, is the agenda meeting, agenda prep for the May 13 council meeting. Tonight, we have a treat. We have from Delta Development, Debbie Grass and Sue Trout and Mike Foreman from the state to talk a little bit about the early intervention plan that we've undertaken. They will review steps one, two, and three, steps four and five, and I'm not sure if there's a sixth step. They'll be covered in May, and we look to try to get our reporting done in June. With that, I'll let Debbie head up the presentation. After their presentation, I just have a few brief items to reference the council and we'll be able to maybe get done before it gets started.
Okay. I think I'll stand here. I didn't realize there'd be so many good citizens here this evening, so that everybody can hear me. And tell me if you're having trouble, but good evening and thank you for allowing us to present tonight. My name is Debbie Grass. As Alex and I am with Delta Development Group, we've been working on these reports for a while. We've met with some of you over the time that we've been working and put, you know, a few bumps here and there, but we've been trying to provide drafts along the way so that the city had an opportunity, city staff at least, had an opportunity to review the information and refine it. So what we're presenting tonight is the first three steps, the final report. With me tonight, I have Sue Trout, who is the City Manager of the City of Greensburg. Sue and I have backgrounds in budget and finance. We've spent a lot of our careers working with municipalities in the area of budget and finance. So we will be presenting the financial pieces of the information tonight. We also have tonight Michael Foreman from the Department of Community and Economic Development. And without him, these studies could not be possible because he is the manager of the funding that provides us the opportunity to do these kinds of studies. So there is in front of you tonight, there's an executive summary in sort of a PowerPoint format, and then the full report. And we know that you haven't had time to really take a look at the full report as Alex said, we would like to come back or be invited to come back sometime sort of mid or late May. We have a few dates in mind that we can give you, and hopefully we'll wrap everything up at that time. The purpose of tonight, again, is the first three steps. The first three steps focus on financial condition, financial assessment, really looking ahead five years to see where the finances are trending, because that helps put everything in context. When we come back next month, we'll be going into each of the departments. We have people who are subject matter experts or consultants in each of the areas, police, fire, public works. Of course, your solid waste and transfer station, that consultant has been working with you for a while. Michelle Nestor, she'll be back that evening to discuss that operation. And we'll also be looking at technology. So having said that, and I know not everybody has the report, so I'll try and keep it simple. The council members have it. But basically, the city solicited proposals from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. As I said, DCED funds these types of studies for communities. And as I said, it is on page three, it shows the three steps or the three different presentations that we'll be doing. The first three we're going to be doing tonight, steps one, two, and three, and then the other steps will come at the follow-up meeting. And again, on page four, we're showing again the six steps and the three that we'll be dealing with tonight. The three we'll be dealing with tonight are financial condition assessment, financial trend analysis, and then looking at anything that is currently or in columns that are very imminent and that need to be addressed immediately. The methodology for the report, I just want to touch very briefly on what we do. We look at your information, and Sue's been here a number of times and requested a whole lot of information that she's looked at and trended for this report. We use the Government Financial Officers Association standards. We use DCED standards for financial monitoring. We use the International City Manager Association standards. So we use and we benchmark all of those things, Latrobe against all of those things, to really come up with a complete review and analysis of your profile. On page six, the first thing we start with is some background information. And again, the study has a whole bunch more of information, but you're probably going to be interested in looking at every area. If you have any questions about it, again, when we come back, we'll be happy to answer those questions. But some of our observations are on page six, that there's relatively stagnant revenue base that doesn't typically support the operating cost. So what that means is your revenue is not increasing as fast as your expenses, and I think that's probably no surprise, and it's probably happening for most municipalities across the Commonwealth. Unless you're in a really growth area where your revenues are increasing dramatically, you're probably not bringing in enough revenue. And there's a number of reasons around that. Some of it has to do with tax policy, some of it has to do with reassessments that haven't kept up. But a lot of municipalities are basically facing the same problem, and that problem is that their revenue is not supporting their operating costs. And we go through a series of things there that are challenges for revenue generation. Assessed values that are decreasing, and we have a chart in here where we're going to show you what's happening with your assessed values. I'm sure you're probably familiar with some of that. You have almost 20% of the population under the age of 65, probably on fixed revenue. Your median housing values are lower than the counties and the state median housing values. 38% of the housing units are rental. Families below the poverty level. You're at 90.5% and the county rate is 7.1%. So you're a little bit higher than the county. The median income, 34,819. The county median income is 47,689. So again, Latrobe is slightly below the county median income. And between 2005 and 2010, you lost jobs, about 400 jobs. And again, there are complete charts and discussion of that in the report that you'll probably want to look at. However, we do think that there are some opportunities for revenue generation. If you look at the tax base and the sectors around jobs and employment, the area of education and science, technology, and actually, it's not listed here, but social assistance in those programs, they are actually increasing, and those provide jobs for people who are living in the area or the region. The other thing that we're not going to talk a whole lot about tonight, but of course we included it in all the financial information, is the transfer station. And as you know, that provides about 27% of the city revenue. Between the solid waste, contract, and the transfer station, it's significant revenue for the city. And that sets Latrobe apart from a lot of other places that we've looked at. We've looked at many other communities. So the transfer station as a revenue-producing asset needs to be looked at, but it needs to be looked at in a number of different ways. And as I said, our consultant, who is an expert in this area, will be here next month to really talk to you about that issue. So in summary, the multi-year deficit fund balances, when we adjust for one-time revenues, so when we take out those revenues that don't occur every single year, so for instance, a portion of your transfer station, that revenue occurs every year, a portion of it sometimes is an excess that are unexpected revenue. Take those out. We take out grants and we take out borrowing, like if you have proceeds from a borrowing. When we do that, we're really showing multi-year deficit fund balances. And that means that there's a gap, again, between your revenue and expenditures if you take all that out. So the city regularly resorts to using operating reserves, and you've been lucky you have significant reserves that you've been able to use to really supplement your operating budget. And again, in recent years, the higher-than-usual transfer station revenues have helped you to build those reserves. You've been able to have those reserves available to support the rest of your budget and the rest of your operation. On page eight, this is basically audited fund balances, 2006 through 2011. That's what we had in terms of audited fund balances. And you can see, again, if we take out those one-time, non-recurring revenues, you've had most years, and the expenses are in red, for most of those years, 2007, 2008, 2009, 2010, you really had less revenue than you did expenses. Now, 2011, for, you know, issues that you're well aware of, the transfer station had a lot of additional money, and so you actually ended up with more revenue than expense that year. Since Sue did the majority of the work on the analysis of the funds and the finances, I'm going to turn it over to Sue Trout right now, and she's going to take you through the steps that we went through and on revenue and expenditure.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to present. I'm going to go from page nine. Leave off kind where Deb stopped off. In step one, we reviewed the revenue history. Total revenues for the City of Latrobe, about 4.7 million, and this increases about 2% annually. About 44% of your revenue is derived from taxes. In 2011, 39% of the revenue was from refuse fees. And again, you are well aware of the hailstorm that resulted in increased activity at your transfer station, which is a large reason for that increase in the revenue. Only about 2% of the revenue is derived from other department earnings, 5% from intergovernmental, and 2% from transfers. The assessed values of the properties declined from 68.9 million in 2007 to 67.1 million in 2012. And as Deb said, that is an area of concern, mostly though outside of your control. The city raised taxes in 2009 and in 2011 at the current rate of 21.5 mils. And again, a lot of that increase in the taxes could have been necessary due to the decrease from the assessments. On page 10, for those of you in the audience who don't have a copy, there's a pie chart that shows the major revenue categories. And also, on page 11, a revenue profile that speaks to all the types of revenues that you have with the associated dollar amounts and the percent total of each area. Again, you'll see what jumps out at you. 39% in the pie chart is refuse. 25% real estate in your Act 511 tax, 19%. Those are your largest areas of revenue generation in the city. And your total revenues...
Excuse me. One place says Act 511 is 19%, and one place says it's 20.5%.
I think there's round the differences in the pie chart. Also, your total revenue is 5.4 million for 2011. Whenever you look at...
I was just going to say, one comment about the revenue is that when you're highly dependent on one source of revenue and you're between your taxes and your refuse collection, you're almost totally dependent on those two sources of revenue. The problem with not diversifying that revenue by, you know, trying to do more with department charges or other types of revenue is that if something happens to any one piece of your revenue, then you actually, you know, are in serious trouble for any given year.
But conversely, a few little departments would have the revenue out of sanitation like we would.
Absolutely.
So we are actually more diversified. We're less reliant on taxes as it relates to real estate and 511 than we are, than other communities might be.
Right. You're less reliant on taxes, but what we find with a lot of other communities is although they're more dependent on departmental earnings, it's not all one earning. It's typically a number of earnings that are derived from licenses and permits and possibly recreation and some other things. And obviously, you don't have recreation because it's a joint venture here. But you will see with other municipalities that they try to move that away from taxes and more to charges, if possible. We've looked at some of that.
Sanitation and your transfer station, that's together then? Point them two together for 39%?
Yes.
Correct. It's all the revenue derived from the curbside and the transfer station, the roll-off service. And just to put it in context, this year's budget has it about 34%.
So that's pretty typical.
Yeah. So it's 39 in 2011, but for 2013, budgetary purposes, it was 34%.
Right. And that's how it's budgeted, so that's how we looked at it. Although, when Michelle's here, she did try to really kind of segregate the expenses out of the revenue so we could look at those issues.
And I know you keep on saying about the storm in 2011, right? Okay.
I have a question about the refuse. You understand what we're doing is we're collecting money for the pickup of the garbage and so on. Most communities, I think, including Greensburg and Unity and Dairy Township, do not do that. So what part of that 2,000, 2,158,000 is actually represented?
The solid waste. I'll look that up, while Sue...
See what I'm saying is that figure looks large, but most communities don't do that.
That's correct.
It's about 1.3 million is on the residential, commercial side of it. The transfer station's only like 700, just in general purposes. It's not, that a whole 2 million isn't, you know, the transfer station, nor is it all on the curbside.
Do you do a later breakout of that?
Yeah, actually, these spreadsheets that are too small for you to see, then I'm going to send you bigger ones. It does itemize each item. It's on page nine in the appendix. But you will see sanitation, solid waste, it breaks out the fuel, the landfill fees, the collection transportation, the recycling, and the transfer station. It breaks it all off separately.
You would take that out of the pie chart. The pie chart would look a lot different.
It would.
It would.
You would have it...
You definitely have a unique asset here in that transfer station. There's just no doubt about it. And you referenced Greensburg, and as an example from the community that I'm from, we do utilize waste management for our collection. They do the billing, they do the collection, and we obtain franchisee from that. So our pie chart would look much different than yours in that respect. So if you're... Okay, going through page 12, it talks about the revenue trends from 2006 through 2012. You can see the revenue start off in 2006 at about 4 million. In 2007, jumped to about 4.3. 2008, a little bit higher, 4.394. 2009, 4.456. You can see that it's growing. 2010, 4.7. 2011 is when you had your big jump to 5.4, and through 2012, you're back down to 5.3. When we look at the assessed value in the real estate collection history, there's a chart that shows the correlation between the market value and the assessed value from 2007 through 2012, and how correlated to your mileage from 2007 through 2012, showing that the increases occurred whenever the assessments were low. And moving on to page 14, the real estate tax collection rates. Again, there's a graph that shows the collections from 2006 through 2011. It shows the blue bar graph showing what the taxes, the amount that's been levied, and the red, which shows the actual tax collected. This we're going to talk about a little bit later, but we are seeing a decrease of approximately from 92%, almost 93% to 89% collection. So you are seeing a decrease between the levy and the amount collected, which is a concern.
And what is typical?
I'm going to say 92, 93%.
Yeah, you were pretty typical up until 2010 and 2011, and that's when we noticed that the collection went to 89%. Now, we talked to Alex a little bit about this. We are seeing that happen during the years where there was economic downturn, when people may not be able to pay their taxes in the current year, and then they end up as delinquent or, you know, go into the tax claimer. So we have seen some of that, and it really depends on the population and the ability to actually pay it in the current year. But we did want to bring it to your attention that in those two years, we did see a decrease of about 3 or 4%.
On page 15, it speaks to the different Act 511 taxes that are collected. They range from the mechanical device, so 4,150, occupation privilege at about 31,000, the real estate transfer tax of about 50,000, local services tax of about 190, and the earned income of about 788,000. Some of the observations on page 16 that we noted as a result of revenue are that revenue does not naturally increase without adjustments to rates. That's pretty common. The tax collection has not been as effective in 2011, 12 as it has been in previous years, which we had just stated earlier. Increases in revenue are driven by real estate tax, increases refugee collection fees and earned income tax, the primary drivers. And revenue does not keep pace with expenditures. In expense history, the total expenditures are about $5 million, increase annually at about 2%. Personnel costs, debt service, and energy costs contribute to the increases. The Police Department accounts for 1.1 million annually or about 21% of the budget. The sanitation and rescue accounts for about 1.3 or 27% of the budget. And the DPW at $625,000 accounts for another 15%. Again, for those of you in the audience who don't have a book, but there's a pie chart that graphs the types of expense by category, and also a chart that shows them by type with the actual amount and the percent total. Again, the areas of the larger expenses on this layer, the police, the public works, and the refuse and sanitation.
One of the things that's a little bit different in the Latrobe budget is that the benefits, some of the benefits are captured in a separate category instead of being associated in the departments. So for instance, those that are, and I'm not sure...
We did move those. They were historically, because we had a tax department when we were at the borough, we went home old, we just had the tax department. We, for the first time in 2013, called the benefits that were in the tax department or employees, moved those into that benefits category so that no particular department has any of those. That's based on recommendations.
Right. And one of the issues with that, and that's fine to collect it that way, but it does make it look like your, for instance, your Police Department is a little bit less than if you compared it to another community where they distributed all the benefits across the departments. And that's, you know, it can be done either way. I'm just pointing out that your benefits really need, probably, in order to think about it, they are spread over all the departments, so that there's some in public works and some in police and some in the administration. So that 16% is not, that's what it's counted for.
Debbie, I've had a problem with that probably for about 10 or 15 years, because it doesn't give you a true picture of what the departments cost, including workers' compensation and other things like that. Is there any program that the DCED offers or the Department of Community Affairs or whatever it's called that can somehow program our numbers that we're supposed to use? You know, the categorical numbers that we're supposed to use in a budget, so that we can get true cost automatically, so to speak, by the push of a button rather than trying to do it manually? Is there anything that anybody has, and why aren't they preparing that?
Right. I mean, it depends on your financial management system. I don't know how yours handles it, but some are more sophisticated and others, and we're going to talk a little bit about that as an issue for Latrobe, because we know that yours probably needs updated. But in the more sophisticated financial management accounting systems, yes, you can distribute it across the departments much more easily. But there's always a piece of it that's going to be manual, because there are, you know, healthcare costs that may vary from month to month. There are, you know, FICA and Medicare. Those can be assigned to the departments. Workers' comp, there's a calculation you have to use because that one's per $1,000 of salary. So there's always a bit of it that is something that you really have to look at manually. But yes, as far as, you know, other communities doing it that way. Now, what I like about showing, I mean, I could argue either side. What I like about showing it in its own benefit piece is you can see the trend of your benefits growing. So you know that your city benefits cost, you know, $200,000 this year and $225,000 without having to look at every department to see what the cost, escalating cost of your benefits are. So I guess I could argue either side, and it really depends on how you'd want to.
Debbie, my question would be, why don't we do it both ways?
You could. You could set up a financial accounting system.
Well, I just wanted to touch on that. I know this is an overall picture, but I just wanted to touch on how we do our accounting. And I complain, I've felt that it's been inadequate. You inherited, of course, I mean, you're doing the same one that everybody else did. But I think that it should be done both ways.
That's a good point. You know, sometimes, some of it's easier than others. The pension benefit, it's easy to see what you pay for police, not as easy to see what you pay across the non-uniform employees. So you have to make decisions along the way, and you could show it depending on your financial accounting system.
And Rich always says about, we always said we want to run this like a business. And a big business has those programs out there, and that's what we need, get that program to do this.
The problem, though, is the reason businesses do it is they want to set their costs to cover it. So I'm not sure, you know, with, and I'm picking on the police, I know the chief's there, I'm picking on police, but even if you knew what the cost of the Police Department was, you're not going to be able to set rates or establish anything that covers that. So there's a reason the private sector does it, because they want to know where to set their pricing and their costs.
I think what we're more interested in is the cost.
Right.
You know, and what is, and we don't have, I personally disagree with you. I think that if business is doing it, it's probably for a good reason, and we shouldn't be doing it also. But anyway, I don't want to stray too far from what you're talking about. Pardon? Just a little.
The good news is, so if you wanted to set it up that way in your accounting system, you could do it.
I don't think we could do it.
No. Well, not in your current accounting system, you couldn't.
Oh, I think we could take the numbers, I think we could take those numbers and translate them into how they would be broken out against the five or six departments. You know, every account has a number, and I think we could do it, but we need a program to do it.
Right. Moving on to page 20, we talk about the expenditure history from 2006 through 2012. You can see that the expenses raised from 4 million... You can see that the expenses raised from four million dollars in two thousand six and they increased in two thousand twelve up to five point one million.
These are revenue.
These are expenses. There's a typo on that second column, it should say expense. Something to note, sanitation, recu are the highest expenses in the budget at twenty-seven percent, police expenditures are twenty-one, except given what we all just talked about is that the benefits aren't allocated based on employees in those areas. The city's expenditures for service are highly dependent on revenue from the transfer station, which we've already touched base on, and parking, which is something that we haven't talked about, have not yet talked about, is not set paid for expenditures. If you look at the projection on page twenty-two, these are the projections of revenue and expense from two thousand six that go forward to two thousand and sixteen. And the numbers don't include non-recurring revenue and the expenses, they've been taken out because they aren't recurring. What we're trying to show here is that each year, your revenues, while they've been increasing, your expenses have been increasing as well. So at some point, you're going to have to make some decisions about how you're going to handle the increase because eventually your reserves are going to start to run low.
Can I ask a question a couple pages back?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Does anybody understand why, I know why our revenue went up in two thousand and eleven. I'm going to ask that.
Oh, yeah.
Wait a minute, let me find it. Okay, page twelve. I know why our revenue went up fifteen, sixteen percent in two thousand and eleven because of the revenue from, from the hailstorm, but it went up almost six percent in two thousand and ten. Do we know why?
Tax increase.
The tax went, the two thousand nine, the dot ten, and then the eleven, okay. That's right, I forgot about the nine.
Tax, they had a tax increase.
And actually, two thousand seven, too.
Okay. I'm back on page twenty-three then.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no, that's fine, that's, you're here for.
And again, just so you know, there's a lot more detail in the, the report.
Yeah, I didn't bring my teeter glasses.
Yeah. I'm just trying to play over some of the highlights. Every, there's much, much more detail in that, in that larger report, but for time constraints and reporting purposes, we're trying to kind of go through this a little bit quickly. Step two, when we talked about the projections for two thousand and thirteen through two thousand and sixteen, we wanted to make some points which include that there is no imminent fiscal crisis. Let me repeat that. There's no imminent fiscal crisis, but things are trending negatively, so we caution you. So it's time to plan and start to get prepared for the future.
What the figure, I see two thousand and thirteen, you're showing it. That's just a difference of four hundred and fifteen thousand.
Correct.
Page twenty-two. That's not a loss.
That's a difference, correct. The transfer station revenue was one point one million in two thousand and eleven and almost one million in two thousand and twelve. Without transfer, transfer station revenue, the city would be trending negatively with structural, major structural deficits. There will continue to be structural deficits without intervention, and the city must consider new sources of revenue, significant cost containment, and the use of the transfer station revenue as a long-term strategy with a specific business plan. We think it's really important for you to kind of take a deep breath and study that transfer station and maybe consider a future business plan. Some of the findings, there are six of them listed on page twenty-four, I'll go through them quickly. Without adjustments to fees and tax rates, ongoing revenues are likely ranging at about four point seven million per year while expenses at five million and escalating about two percent per year. The city's earned income tax collection under the new countywide collection system, which just started in two thousand and twelve, increased by four percent from eleven, and this is less than the typical increase in Latrobe of about seven percent. The pension expenses are a growing concern because the state does not cover the MMO. If left unaddressed, it will have a negative impact on the city's ability to fund basic services in the future. The transfer station expenses make up twenty percent, twenty-seven percent, and have been growing. The greatest cost increases are likely to be healthcare insurance, pension obligation, and energy expenses, and the city's best option is to proactively address these issues. Without intervention, the city is likely to see growing structural deficits in future years that would be in excess of five hundred thousand dollars by two thousand and sixteen. And again, on page twenty-five, there's projections through two thousand and sixteen where it shows the revenue and expense and how they're trending with the appropriate numbers.
Just one point about the countywide collection. That's probably a transitional year. You, as we said, you were typically seeing a six to seven percent increase from year to year. There was only a four percent from what we saw in two thousand and twelve. Those were not auditing numbers, they were just your year-end actual numbers. So it could be that it's a transition year and it may, you know, bright itself, but it's something to keep an eye on because that's a major source of, of revenue for you.
Okay. So what does this all mean in step three on page twenty-six? We have some recommendations that we'd like you to consider. As far as diversifying the revenue base, we would like you to consider the, an increase in current collections of real estate and earned income tax. If you were to collect one percent more, it could equate to twenty-five thousand dollars. Also, consider using it.
Or one percent, one percent of both will give us twenty-five thousand. One percent.
Of the delinquent collection.
That's real estate.
The real estate, the delinquent collection.
And the EIT, we're at the mercy of.
The county collection.
The county collection agency for that, right?
They collect for you, yes, while you're behind.
So we're, weren't there women fancy to get, get it more collected? Is that correct?
You actually could enter into separate agreements, I believe, to increase the delinquent collection, but I was more speaking upon the real estate, the figure that I gave the one percent of twenty-five thousand dollars.
And I know we have it here somewhere, not in the summary, in the main report, we were actually suggesting that you look at possibly having the EIT collector, whoever you're most comfortable with, to do it all as an outside collection. You have that opportunity, and you might be able to maximize your collections if you looked at moving it, and a lot of communities are doing it now that the countywide collector's been identified, not only to increase their collections, but as a convenience to residents because then all the collection is in one place.
So.
So it's something to look at and see if it makes sense for you.
Well, what happens to Madeline, our tax collector, and the other employee? What?
Likely they would be laid off.
And you would want to probably do it at a time when you can do it through attrition. Obviously, we're not suggesting that you try and impact your employee or staff, but it is something that communities are looking at in terms of maximizing their collection rates.
That was actually the second bullet point there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Also, the third bullet point, increase in EIT. While I know, I realize that that's an unpopular political decision, increasing it to point nine oh, going up point two seven, that may be a way to save the budget so by two thousand and sixteen, you're not looking at a deficit.
What, point six three now?
Correct.
Point six three.
So going up to point nine oh. Point two seven increase.
How much is that?
If you were to increase that, we estimate that you could get about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Twenty more, twenty one percent. It's twenty one percent, which turn twenty thousand.
Well, it sits well with the senior citizens, but not those that are working.
But it helps diversify so it's not all on the real estate collection. That's why a lot of communities use it that way.
And while we're talking about the countywide collector, we've also seen that it's a positive influence on communities if the communities stay very involved in their local TCCs, the Tax Collector Commission. I know Alex is involved because those are the entities, or those are the voices that are making decisions about future tax collection as far as the collector and roles in the bylaws. So I would encourage everybody staying involved in that because the members are what make up what happens for a little bit through EIT. So it can only be a positive to stay involved. The next item, I want to talk about the occupation privilege tax of ten dollars. In our review, we, that's really not an occupation privilege tax, it's really a residence tax. If anything, I, I believe it's misnamed, but I believe that might be one of those taxes some people refer to as a nuisance tax. You might want to review that tax and see if it's in your best interest to look at the cost to collect it and see if it's even worth collecting.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's definitely at the very least mislabeled because it's called occupational privilege, but it's assessed on people who live there, not people who work here.
Who occupy but not.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And so I'm not sure, and you know, certainly the solicitor can take a look at it, but I think that it needs, it needs some attention probably, and it's not generating a huge amount of dollars for you.
Good question also, I think, is, is there a per capita, school per capita tax? And isn't that sent out individually also?
Yes.
Those five dollars.
You have a per capita tax, and that is part of Act five eleven, so you're okay with that one?
Yeah.
Are any of the communities, just, let's say you eliminate the per capita tax and just take it out of general revenues and then not the expenditure? Are any communities doing that? I mean, sort of work a deal with the school district so that, you know, they know how much they're going to get, and that we see that they get it, but we don't really send it out?
I'm not familiar with any school district that's done that out, but speaking from Greensburg's perspective, we eliminated our ten dollar tax, whatever, we increased our earned income.
How about the five dollar school per capita?
Yeah, I don't.
That's, yeah, that would be their decision.
Yeah, that would be theirs.
We said that, could we not?
Yeah, because I think you do work, you collect for them.
And they pay us for it though.
Right.
They pay them for it.
Right. You send out the bills, but they pay you to send out their bills. So it's not your tax, it's their tax, so they would have to make that decision about whether to eliminate that or not.
We're also suggesting that you use a rental registration information to try to help boost your earned income tax increases by setting that, reviewing your tax rolls or you could even use your occupation privilege tax, tax rules because it's actually a residence tax, to make sure that you cross references with Burkeheimers' roles so you know that you're not missing people as far as collection. Annual reviews of any of those tax rolls is always helpful and good to share with the collectors so that you know that no one's wrong.
If you rent a house or something and you pay earned income tax on the rental, is that, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying.
The actual occupants.
Yeah, the occupants who live there and work, you could be missing them if they're transient folks.
The renter, we could not forget any income tax on the renter.
Renter. How about the landlord?
You mean that utilizes that as a business?
No. A landlord rents a house or something. I own a property and I rent it, can you tax that?
You could develop a fee, like a rental registration fee.
But you can't, but I think she said, I think he's asking you, since I, if I live in town and I own property, that's income, that's like earned income for me on that rental property. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, thank you, Rose.
And are you, are you saying, should they be paying earned income tax on that? Yeah.
Why not?
That would be part of your EIT. Anyways, I mean, you would get assessed for that because it would be part of your income when you did your taxes.
Now, communities that have.
You have to pass that specially, I believe.
Communities that have business privilege tax have the rental units submit their.
That's for the management.
For them, yeah. They, they have to pay on their gross receipts. You don't have a business privilege tax.
The renter does.
Pardon?
The renter does, you're saying?
No, the owners, yes.
I don't think we're collecting that. I don't think we have.
You don't have business privilege, so you don't have business privilege.
That would be a, that'd be a separate form on.
Yes.
Income, Rosie, you know, for rental property.
For rental property.
With your depreciation. And we do not collect the earned income tax on that.
Right. In the form of a business privilege tax, if that's what you mean.
No, in the form of earned income tax.
The only way you collect it is if they were, would report it because it's reported to an outside agency.
Right.
We don't have a law, we don't have a law that says that they have to pay on.
Well, it's, I mean, they're different than a, me, I have to attach a Schedule C, you know, at the end of the year.
That's.
So if, if the person owns property, maybe they have a job, but that's also a business for them, they have to develop a Schedule C at the end of the year for that incomes. I mean, they, they may have a loss, they may have income art dealer, but that should be included on the earned income.
I don't think so.
It's an income, just like mine would be.
Not, not the same.
Might not be the same, but I think they have to include.
Alex, your thoughts?
If we're not getting, we got it from Dow Howard.
We're not getting it now, I know. We would want to get it.
You have an ordinance on your books that governs the collection of earned income tax, and it will have definitions in that ordinance as to what is included and what's not included. So your tax collector, Burkeheimer.
I was going to say.
They have your ordinance, so they know.
They report appropriately.
Correct. They know what has to be submitted and.
So you're suggesting our ordinance may have a nuance different than Hemphill Township?
It, it could, most of them are drafted.
I noticed it did.
Right.
Probably under Act thirty-two, they were all standardized and uniform.
I think it was.
It's either earned income or net profits levy that's being imposed along the taxpayer.
Without a list of landlords, how do we know who is and isn't collecting earned income?
And that's back to the point.
That's something that if we had a list that could be given to Burke.
Right.
Heimer, and they can double check and say, hey, these fifteen people haven't paid any income, but they're, any income tax on their rental, but they are listed as renters in the state.
That's exactly right, and that's the point I think Sue was making. Is if you have a good rental registration program that has your renters and that's updated regularly, because remember renters come and go, you know, who lives there this year may not live there next year. So it's not just good enough to have a list today, it have, you have to have a renewal list that you get good information on a regular basis and you get it to your tax collector.
That still doesn't answer the question. That's the renters.
That's the renters.
You know that we can tag them, but I don't think we can tag the landlord. If he makes, let's say he rents for six thousand a year and he has three thousand depreciation and makes three thousand off that property, I don't think our current ordinance allows us to charge the EIT on it because it's like a passive income.
If the person is a resident of your community, you should be able to capture that revenue through taxation.
I'm saying we don't, though.
I don't know that we know that we don't do.
I was just going to say.
That's why you should have to call your tenant.
I think it's time to do a revisiting of taxation one oh one here.
Just look at your ordinance and see what the definitions are for income. I mean, that's where you're going to find it.
Okay. The next item is to consider an increase in the mechanical device fee. Right now, you charge fifty dollars. A lot of various communities charge a much higher rate. We were suggesting that you double that rate to a hundred. If you were to just do that alone, you could increase your revenue by five thousand dollars. Also, we suggest that you adopt a fee resolution that includes all the fees that you collect, something that you adopt annually, maybe in conjunction with your budget, so that everybody knows what fees exist and that you're comfortable, and that you're reviewing those fees in conjunction with your operations to make sure that you're charging enough. Something that we already hit on that requires discussion again is to improve the financial reporting with an update in the financial management system. Your current system, it's not being supported, it's old, it's DOS-based system. While the girls down there are really good at operating it and they seem to always be able to figure out if, if we're ever really to have a significant concern, I don't know that you're going to be able to find anybody out that's going to be able to support it because it's so old. And I know that Deb has talked with Alex about maybe finding ways through future discussions to maybe help with a grant or purchase or something either. Want to talk about that now or not?
Yeah, Mike and, Michael and I were just talking, and phase two EIT, we can still maybe talk about it, get it up in, and they might, they will consider it and might fund the financial management system. We know that's a real need.
Yes, we would consider that.
Thank you.
Also, we're suggesting that you raise the tax rates, increase incrementally if necessary. Again, by review of your expenses and seeing what the actual costs are to make sure that you're, what you're charging is actually equaling the expense. Some examples of those are your street opening permits. You could consider taking a look at those and seeing if the permits, the price that you're charging is actually equal to the restoration of the road opening. Something else that you could consider would be checking with your cable collections to make sure that what you're receiving as far as cable collections is in conjunction with your agreement. Five percent of the revenues is typically what everybody gets, but again, it might require you to do an audit of a month's billing to make sure that. require you to do an audit of a month's billing to make sure that what, what the cable company is submitting to is actually what you deserve.
I think, Debbie, I just said, yeah, I did share with you a proposal to do an audit.
Right. And, yeah, there are some really good companies that are doing that, and like Sue said, everybody gets five, well, most communities got five percent, but five percent of what are they including everything that you're entitled to, and that's what you really...
The reality for us is, ours is so outdated, it's like four cable companies ago, the name, I mean, it's...
When is your franchise occurring enough for renewal?
Actually, right now.
There you have it.
Right from the iron's heart.
That's why, I, I've already entertained proposals to do the audit, and again, the thinking is that the audit will be more than paid for by how well we manage our next...
Yeah.
And then, and theoretically, you could go back a few years and get stuff that they have been underpaying you to pay for the audit as well, but offline, Debbie and I have been discussing that and trying to do that forward.
Since that's something that's up, here's something else you might want to consider, again, just like I, we were talking about reviewing the tax rolls to see if you're missing anybody, you could do an audit of your addresses, you can go address by address and make sure that the cable company, that you were getting the correct revenue from the correct addresses. We found that recently, that they were including other communities or not, they were getting our revenues in Greensburg as a example. So, that might be something else, review their billing list. Just throwing it out there as an idea.
Thank you.
I did ask Alex also if you guys ever consider challenging any of the assessments, I'm real like, school districts typically drive that assessment, but if you know one that's glaringly different, that, that might be an opportunity, um, yeah, it's fifty-fifty shot there.
Oh, yeah. I don't think City Brewing's new flat has gone under rule as well.
I think you're correct. I'll have to give the call to the assessor to make sure they visit him.
I have a question, uh, you tear down a building and put in a parking lot, is that an improvement or is that just land? Is that assessed as land or is it assessed as, as an improvement in some way?
I believe it's assessed as land. That's really a question for the Tax Assessment Office of West Monroe County, but from experience, I think it goes back to land.
See, normally, properties assess land and then improvements on the land, but when you take the improvements off the land or the structure, all you have is just the land to value.
What if you, uh, put down a surface, hard surface, you line it, and put concrete curbs and then sell the parking space?
Then, the assessment is based on the value of that parcel of land, and I think nothing else, because there's nothing to take up the space until there's an improvement on the land, then it's gonna be re-assessed.
Put a foundation there, put a foundation down on it, then you can claim it as a house or, or something.
Yeah. Again, it's land and then improvements on the land, as an assessment criteria.
So, every time somebody buys one of our old houses up and put a parking lot there, they're just taking a comment on our real estate guys?
That's been my experience, and most, most of my experience has been with industrial property or commercial property in, in troubled communities that have lost money because of it.
It wouldn't hurt to ask our assessor, you know, how that, particularly considering generating, yeah.
You demolish a building and you have a flat piece of ground with dirt on it, theoretically, now you surface it, and you put in some catch basins, you put on those concrete blocks, and you put in your lines, is that an improvement?
Sounds like...
Sounds like you're changing the use of it. Is the use being changed?
Well, it could have been a house, it went to a parking lot, sorry.
It may have gone from residential to commercial, in a sense. It should be, it should be explored.
But hopefully, you get to earn income from it.
I'm gonna have everybody add it.
Good question.
Page twenty-seven, uh, some further key recommendations are to examine every vacant position or when positions become vacant in terms of whether it's necessary, what the cost, if it advances the city goals. Track and to trend overtime rarely, so you know at what times that you're paying overtime and for what need, and this might be an opportunity to, to determine if you could consider using part-time employees at times for certain types of revenue. Also, set up transfer station and parking in separate enterprise funds, right now, those are all in the general fund and really, for proper accountability, they should be in their own enterprise funds, some people call them proprietary funds, they shouldn't really be segregated and tracked individually.
This is what you'll be asking, so...
Engage in regular discussions with bargaining units about fiscal constraints, letting them know where you stand and if possible, if you can't afford things, as an example, like raises or, or you need to, you have a large increase in healthcare and you need some participation, they're good times to talk about that. Also, you could consider healthcare buyouts for employees as an incentive, if they're not going to be taking your healthcare, maybe offering a buyout as opposed to, that might be an incentive for somebody not to take the healthcare, which might decrease your costs. Establish clear goals and objectives through strategic planning in each department and evaluate employees based on those goals. Invest in an upgrade, an updated enterprise software system that addresses accounting and financial management, but also includes HR and land use management, license and permits, which I think that we've talked and talked about, I think you guys know where we're going with that. And continue to discuss shared services with adjacent municipalities, I think I read in a paper that you guys were considering possibly providing security or police services to the University of St. Vincent. Again, I, I would think, review of the costs that would be necessary, so that whatever service you're gonna provide, you get a fee that matches, again, the level of service would be approved in the process. A couple of other areas where you might try to find some fiscal savings is in your workers' compensation program, you start a certified safety committee that becomes Allen and I certified by the Department of Labor Industry, you could save a percentage off of your premiums, five percent, off, I guess, you guys and me, about thirty-two hundred dollars. And also, whenever you guys are doing your, your budgeting, I noticed in some of your capital budgets, some of the things that you, the transfers that you're making that are of a capital nature, aren't really of a capital nature, they're more of an operating nature, so you might want to revisit how your...
We did, for two thousand thirteen, we took that recommendation and changed that.
Okay, thank you, that was something that Alex and I had talked about in the end of two thousand twelve, so I wasn't sure how to, how to make that. Good work, Alex. And I can't emphasize enough how continuity with your team leaders really equates the success of your organization. I, I've seen it time and time again, if, if there's high turnover, it just seems that revenues lack, expenses increase because there's not a clear direction, so I, I can't emphasize enough the continuity of that, how that affects your financials. I also know when it comes to parking, that you've instituted that pago service, the pay by space, to offer choice, and that you guys also instituted new parking fees and rates after you did a study with that. Again, those, those fees and rates are something that I would think you'd want to put in a whole encompassing fee structure for the entirety of the municipality, so that you're covered in everything.
Well, Alex, why don't we think those are gonna be...
All rates are implemented, in fact, it's pretty slick, every meter in town is now a digital meter, and for a two-week rental, you literally can change every rate by just sticking the handheld unit to each machine, whereas before, we had the mechanized systems, we couldn't change rates like that. Not that the public would like that, we could change rates much more conveniently now, and every meter's been changed, every pass has been changed, all the fines have been implemented, so May will be a first, complete month with all of those new revenues.
And lastly, as we mentioned, we touched about energy costs possibly increasing, you might want to consider one of those energy savings programs where they can often review your facilities, and if you qualify for a program, then you could do a capital borrowing where the energy savings match the capital expenditures in order to achieve those savings through an ESCA program, that might be something else that you could get some capital upgrades, and it would be cost neutral. Those are just some tidbits or some ideas I throw out, every little bit could help.
Yeah, we just, we just want to thank you for your attention, as I said, we would like to come back, now, Mike, Mike, we're gonna throw out a couple dates, the last week is May, right after Memorial Day, we try to work around Mike Foreman's schedule and our everybody's schedule, I don't know if that works for you, but that Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday, I think we were good any of those days, so if one of those days works for you...
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, or May thirtieth, ladies and gentlemen.
And we will bring, as I said, our consultants for each of the departments, we do want to stay in the departments, everybody's been super cooperative, Alex couldn't be more cordial and more bugging him like crazy for more and more and more information, we appreciate that not every place is as cooperative and has the information available that we've asked for, so that, we really commend your staff and your organization. We have done a lot of these, and most of them are, have a lot more problems than you do, so even though we're pointing out things that we think could be done to be more effective and to could improve your organization, you've already done a lot, we commend you for that, we commend you for taking the time to really look at your organization and make some decisions about changes, because not everyone's willing to do that now, and not every community, so I think ultimately, it will help you to make decisions long-term for your community, and having said that, I know we took up a lot of time here, but if you have questions, and we'll, again, we'll be back.
Can somebody, does anybody have a date preference to any of those dates? You guys want to just pick one, doesn't matter, it doesn't seem like...
We're going to be meeting, as you know, on the twenty-eighth because of the Memorial Day, we're going...
Right, so why don't we do it then? You don't want to do it then?
We, we could theoretically do it then, like we're doing it this tonight, or we could do another day.
That's right.
How much time would you like, Debbie, for your final presentation?
Well, I'm just thinking that we do have, like I said, all our consultants are that night, so I don't know how much time you will allow us, but we wanted to make sure that you had enough time to ask questions to the consultants in the individual departments.
We could do our agenda prep first, and then do this afterwards.
Or, or have an earlier afternoon session and then have another session.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. You guys have prep?
I, I could swing with that.
Which one?
I, I could swing with that.
Which one?
The twenty-eighth on the, the agenda, that's when our agenda is, right?
And we can start, we can, we can...
We can just start earlier.
Start our agenda meeting at six, that day, and then, the agenda prep itself usually takes half an hour.
Okay. May, well, you just let us know when you want us here, maybe.
Let's, let's just say to twenty-eight to six o'clock.
We have to advertise.
I know.
If we advertise, it'll change anyhow, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
We're gonna advertise to change the date.
No, but I'm, yeah, I, right, you're right.
Because of the holiday?
Yeah, because, yeah, because of the holiday.
Change the date anytime.
No, I understand.
So, we're, we're saying, we'll do six o'clock for the agenda prep and then six-thirty for this.
And Alex, we're, I'll talk to you tomorrow, because if we can get that application in, that...
Is that open to the public?
Yes. And I'll have electronic versions of the reports that you had tonight, we'll try to get them online.
I'll get them to you tomorrow, absolutely. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, nice to see you, Sue.
You too.
Looking back at the, thank you, Debbie, and Sue, and Mike, looking back at May thirteenth agenda for the meeting, we will be doing employee recognition, the city, for a number of years, has not had any employee recognition, we're gonna be inviting city workers to come to that meeting, there'll be a proclamation for different workers of different years of service. We'll also be entertaining a resolution to apply for the redevelopment assistance capital program, but of course, it's the one million dollars that we've been notified that we've been awarded, but we have to pass a resolution to apply for it, so we'll have that in the May meeting. Joe, if, if you could, get your stuff ready, we're, we're going to be looking at, of course, the paving program for two thousand thirteen, right now, we're looking at about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for paving as a budget, unfortunately, Josephine Street alone, we're looking at about two hundred and twenty thousand dollar cost.
Two hundred and eighty thousand.
Two hundred and eighty thousand dollars cost.
Joe, is that, is that the whole street, or is that just sections? Do we think about just doing sections of it?
Um, well, uh, to bring you up to speed real quick, we originally were going to do Josephine Street in its entirety, that, that estimate come back in at five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Yes. Uh, as you all know, we got Underground Springs up there, it's just falling apart. I went back with Gibson Thomas, with Danny Schmidt, we walked it, we drove up and down, we talked about different ways to cut it, and we narrowed it down to two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which is still out of our range as far as what we have budgeted.
That's about ninety thousand dollars more than we budgeted for the year.
Now, bear in mind also, ladies and gentlemen, that, that, that price there does not cover inspection fees or design and engineering, so tack another ten or twelve percent onto that. My, uh, Alex and I have been working with the brewery down here on Oak Street, that intersection is very bad, and the brewery is very anxious and contributing towards the cost of getting that area done, and it, it's, it's a great thing to have somebody participate and help us pay for a road, I just need some guidance. Josephine Street's gonna be close to three hundred thousand dollars, we have a hundred and ninety. My other, my other recourse, Mr. Givernangelo, as you brought up, is to go in there and just do the very top of it, get some underground drainage in there, and perhaps follow through next year with some stuff.
Is there any sewer work that needs...
Exactly, but the problem is, it's on the spring, so we need to do new catch basins and new piping to keep it from just crumbling again.
I'm thinking that's the street, it's got all the big bumps in it.
That's to the right side of, uh...
It's our traffic...
The shopping center, like right up from McDonald's.
Joe, particularly, what was Gibson's Thomas plan on correcting the problem that they set?
What are they planning on doing?
What, what's their recommendation?
An in-depth, an in-depth, uh, dig out, put cross drainage in, underground drainage, tie it into existing catch basins down at the bottom.
Down at the bottom. Close the street.
Pardon me?
Close the street.
Uh, perhaps, if it gets much worse.
Joe, how much challenge would there be if you did the top section, obviously, water flows downhill, you improve the drainage up there, but it's going into inadequate conveyance systems as you get on the hill?
What's, what's gonna happen is you'll repair the top, but you're gonna start the problem from not here at the top, working its way down, what you're gonna do is you're gonna jump down a couple runs on a ladder, and your problem is now going to be from there down.
I guess what I was thinking was, if, you know, if you have a, a large pipe going into a smaller pipe, you've got a problem when it comes to water drainage and downhill, I just didn't know, fleet, we're just addressing the top of the...
Our, our problem is the catch basins are down at the bottom, so anything we tie in, we have to come clear to the bottom anyhow.
Now, you're two, the cross street right there, what's, what's the name of that cross street right there?
Uh, one, one is Raymond and one is Daley.
Daley. I think it's the Daley one, where it comes down from the top, and then it stops right at Daley right there, and then back again, that's where all the damage is at, it's like a mess right there.
No. It's, it's a mess, I agree.
Look at it, their proposal here, they want to tear out the existing concrete curb, which, if I'm not mistaken, is not in that awful bad a shape.
That's to get to the lines.
Huh?
I think they were doing that to get, to put the drainage pipes in, I think.
Yeah, run that flinch drain right down along that curb, that curb is eighteen inches thick, goes down in the ground from six inches exposed, or eight inches exposed, to the ten inches down below the ground.
What?
It's straight.
Oh, I know.
I don't know what...
I don't think it's...
I, I don't see why they want to tear out that concrete curb that is not destroyed or tore up and still serve its purpose.
Well, I mean, that's a question you can ask them.
Question I ask them, what that produces a cost.
Well...
Exactly.
I'd ask them what the need of it is first.
Put up an asphalt curb that is gonna last for two, three years till applause catches it or whatnot, that curb's not there no more, and we're replacing the curbs section by section.
Asphalt curbs work in rural neighborhoods, not in areas like that.
I don't know if you know offhand, Joe, what would be the, just the linear feet, not the square feet or square yards, what are we talking about, how many linear feet, you know? I guess the reason I'm interested, realize, we have about forty miles of highway and I guess the reason I'm interested, realize we have about forty miles of highway in this town already.
They're looking at go over two thousand linear feet of curb.
And you need to do between forty and fifty percent every year just to have a regular cycle. So we need to be doing like two thousand, twenty-five hundred feet, linear feet a year, just to keep pace.
Just, just to bring council up to speed, I did a little check in here recently. In two thousand and three, which was ten years ago, my street paving budget was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Right now, due to what we've done here, we had some alleys added on and we've got an increase in money. It's up to a hundred and ninety-some thousand dollars now. But that's ten years later.
I'm guessing the cost of doing it has, you know, been much more rapidly than.
To back to Joe's point, the liquid fuels is a formula based on population. So population alone is part of the reason why our liquid fuels has decreased. In fact, the only reason it isn't lower again is because we've been adding the alleys to try to increase our mileage. But the bottom line is, as Joe's noted, I mean, a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. This year, we've talked about a hundred and ninety thousand. That's only a thirteen thousand dollar increase. And certainly, as you know, the cost has not been that stagnant, you know, steady.
Basically, what we're looking at then is people that are eroding their curb and stuff like that. If you can increase your taxes.
I can go back, Mr. Porish, and, you know, talk to Danny Schmidt and find out the reasoning on removing that or does all of it have to come out? But regardless, I still need some guidance from council.
I understand, Joe. I mean, I'm just, I'm questioning why they want to get into that much. They're calling for heavier specs on that road than what they did on the main road of Lincoln Avenue.
Which is falling apart.
Which is falling apart.
What are we trying to avoid in that?
Well.
Trying to avoid having to do it again in two years.
Joe, you do something that spring day, you're going to have that trouble with that road closing. I've been all three of your papers.
You have to lay off three, four or five.
No, the budget's the budget. I think what Joe's looking for is as far as guidance, and we've got some of that, which is to look at the top section. You know, meanwhile, at Oak and Harding, we're going to look at, you know, the best public-private partnership we can do there because I think there's an opportunity with a manufacturer to invest in their driveway, if you will. The road's out in front of their business to address those. So I think, Joe, what we do is kind of go back on both fronts. And I need to talk to the solicitor too because there may be an opportunity where actually they let, you know, the contract, which may be conducive for the bottom line. It may not be, but we'll just have to see.
And one more point for council. As you well know, just as a reminder, there is no CDBG paving going on this year. That has been reduced, well, actually, it has been cut for this year. We, for a number of years now, have been getting used to doing a number of streets in town through that money. And this year, there was, I believe, five streets in the first ward area that was picked out. And that's removed from our paving too. And.
And not to pick on Joe, we have more than any other community diverted CDBG to paving. A lot of other communities improve handicap sidewalks and do other kinds of things with their CDBG. We've just focused on paving, and even with that, we've not been able to keep up.
I don't think we can do a two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollar street. I think you have to do a patching job as best you can for as little as you can. I mean, that's the way I would go. You know, you shouldn't even probably put sixty or seventy thousand dollars into that street, you know, out of your budget. That's the way I feel about it. There's about two or three bumps that are bad, and if we can fix just the bumps.
Richard, that road is, it is beyond a little cosmetic repair because we'll just be fixing it again if we get any kind of rain, wet weather, or anything like that. My point here is just because Gibson Thomas comes back and tells us this is what needs to be done, we need to question them on that because there is the education here on council that knows about this stuff, and we just don't need to jump on exactly what they tell us we're going to do. I disagree with their plan right there. I laid blacktop for thirty years, paid for lots of roads and everything, and I disagree with that totally. That's, they're over budgeting, they're killing us on.
But even still, stuffy, you take a hundred thousand dollars off that, it's still a hundred and eighty thousand dollar job. I mean, it's a lot of money.
I understand. I'm not saying it's going to be cheap. I'm not saying it's going to be, but it doesn't need to be that awful amount of money.
Steve, do you think it still should be the whole street?
I've been up and down that street. There's, the only way to correct the problem is, it does need to be corrected. It does need to have French drains put in it. There is drains on the side streets. There's a way that can get done without running the whole way down to the bottom catch bases because in that same case of Duncan, when you get heavy rains and bottom catch basins are going to flood down there in the first place. There's catch basins on each one of them side streets that can be tapped into there or the ditch repaired to it off of that.
There's not basins on each one of the side streets.
There's no basins on any of them streets at all?
There are some, but if I have to, what is, I would rather run straight downhill than take it on another street and tear up another street.
Well, I'm not saying tear up the whole street, Joe, if. This is something that has to be looked at. I'm guessing there's catch basins. Each one of them roads is crowned in the middle. I know one runs left, one runs right. Am I mistaken on that or being to lay out of land, that's how it would have to be generally planned out?
It's a convex crown. Okay? But it's not running to the sides to the basins. It's running to the bottom. Water's being guided that way. I just needed some guidance for council to make aware, and I will go with all of your recommendations, back to Gibson Thomas this week.
If you've got any questions for me or anyone else, you can call me. You can call me twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
I've got to call you two more.
Just a couple more agenda items. One, we're looking at a potential land development over on Knox in the fifth ward. And then the Pennsylvania municipal league has a convention annually, and there's an opportunity as a member to appoint a delegate to be a voting representative at the conference. So that will be presented to council as well.
How did the meetings from the transfer station?
Sorry, Richard?
How did the meeting at the transfer station fail?
We had four representatives from four different haulers, I guess would be the best way to say. We did have about a two-hour meeting where we answered at least two dozen questions. We did a site review of the facility where each hauler had an opportunity to ask questions and look at the site. Now, we will be submitting to the haulers present, those who are unable to make it, basically the formal answers, written answers to the questions that were submitted to the best, you know, of our ability. And you also have, council has in their packet, a letter from the bargaining unit sharing with council some of their concerns as well as an interest in meeting with council before council votes and entertains, you know, the.
Award for bid.
Award for bid, yeah.
I also, I think since we're talking about finances today, it's important to, you know, by not doing that, increasing our recycling, we're missing out on about eighteen thousand dollars worth of grant money. According to Ellen, we have a potential to get up to about eighteen thousand dollars worth of grant money if we have to increase our recycling. By not doing that, I think, you know, I think that's a mistake, but I've made that perfectly clear.
Actually, that grant money, Alex, isn't that money that takes the people, they drove on recyclable? You can't use that in your budget not like that.
You can use grant money to purchase equipment, bins, theoretically a truck of some sort. Yeah, there's a big emphasis on education, whether that's materials you have around the city or whatever like that.
But there's a lot of avenues, there's a lot of ways to utilize that money that would free up money in other places anyway.
Yeah, theoretically, we could do recycling stuff here for more stuff to city building and get a grant to, you know, for units. Do that.
On the meetings that you're going to have, would it be possible we could have special counsel or labor counsel?
Oh, yes, I've already.
How about Tim Uwitt, who's worked with us?
Same consultant who worked with us on the FOP, I would like to utilize for.
His attorney?
They're a firm out of Pittsburgh.
We use. You guys worked with them, didn't you, Mike?
Campbell, Vanity, Durant.
I'd like to use them for this discussion. Jim and I already talked about that earlier.
You don't want to use Tim Uwitt, he's local?
I would rather go with this firm.
And they assisted us in the.
Local government labor laws are especially, that's all they do. They don't do, you know, contracts for businesses or other things. They do local government labor law.
Well, I know you have that letter. Have you had a discussion with anybody concerning the letter?
Yes, I discussed it with the council representative of Aspen, Council eighty-three.
Who's that?
Don Greiner.
And does he understand that we're not leasing the transfer station? That's what the tone of the letter seems to say.
I understand that. I think the bargaining unit is very well aware of the parameters. In fact, they did participate in the pre-bid meeting. Of course, they're around city hall, so they know what's going on. They're concerned that we are negotiating work that is in their contract to do. And we're giving it, we're giving it.
Trucking, yes.
The disposal and transport of the refuse, you know, the transfer station material, they feel is a, is a, is something that they're in their contract to provide and that we don't have the right to.
Bargaining unit work.
And that's what they'd like to discuss, the potential negotiating, yeah, or discussing that.
Yeah, I guess, guess it doesn't much matter whether you're driving a truck or helping repair streets, right? I mean, is that?
Well, certainly, council's made the argument that this will not, this will be employment neutral, won't be solid in a layoff. And that's nice as a statement, but they're concerned about their jobs. And so they feel they need to be proactive instead of just waiting for it to happen. That is a potential layoff. They want to be more proactive, that's.
Yeah, I don't know that anybody is willing to sit here and say that a year from now or two years from now that there will be a reduction because there will be a lack of work issue. And I also think that.
I mean, that's their concern, not suggesting it by your mom.
And I think they look at it as typically bargaining unit work, that work that has been part of their bargaining unit for years, and they feel, you know, they have to protect that.
Basically, I said, basically, I understand what you're saying, but basically, it's going to come down to this right here. It might be possible to be a layoff anyway.
Well, yeah, if you read this here, it also tells, if you read this here, it tells you to, it tells us that we should slow down and look at that whole process of our transfer station as to increase its revenue and that it is one of our only revenue generating sources, not to slow down what we're doing. So you can use this, but you support your argument, but you kind of have to use it when it doesn't, and so do I.
Basically, as you're still going to make the same amount of money coming across the scale.
Yeah, I think we may have to be looking at an increase across the scale price.
That's going to be no matter what.
That's going to happen to be, but.
I still, I still.
You can't target, I'll probably, I don't think we should target the public works department because we're going into a hole, which is what, it doesn't just say that public works is going, it says everything is going down.
Oh, absolutely. I agree, but it's also saying that you're, that in our, in the two examples that it says of things we could do, one of them says to take a look at your process there and look at developing it and growing it.
Well, I'm ready to make a recommendation that we increase the minimum across the scale right now.
I think it basically says the same thing.
I'll then put it on you again.
In this whole program here, you're basically looking at, you know, looking at someplace consolidation, regelization, you know, maybe work with union ownership and different things.
Yeah, there's a lot of options. There's a lot.
Just the transfer station.
We got to look and see what.
Yes, you can't, just can't, just can't go on all the time, it's just transfer station.
Is it, as you're all aware of, Playland is under, is in full swing. Tomorrow, I think, is when the large groups will arrive. I still think they might need some tools, if anybody's got some power tools they'd like to lend them. They'll get them back in good condition, and if not, they'll replace them if they're damaged. But right now, the city workers have, the city workers are on the hook to do over a hundred hours of time there. I'm really proud about how that's worked out. Looking forward to see how it all wraps up. On Sunday, everybody's invited at six P.M. for the ribbon cutting.
What kind of tools do they need?
They need circular saws, power tools, both corded and cordless.
Wheelbarrows, I think.
Wheelbarrows, but they need cordless and corded power drills, they can use both. They can use a table saw or some circular saws as well.
Like a chop saw?
And they're still, every, just about every shift Wednesday on has some time, particularly on Saturday, there's times needed for volunteers. They're looking at eighty per shift, three shifts per day, two-hundred-and-forty people throughout the week.
Whenever you're done, I can still on there. We have the letter about the courtyard, side of Courtyard Plaza, what are we doing about that?
On Monday at two P.M., there'll be a meeting with our engineer in Public Works, and him's going to give us some insight before we get there. As you know, we wanted to address the Courtyard Plaza as a part of the, you know, the garage rebuild. We got a quote from Carl Walker and couldn't afford their fix. So now that they're out of the picture, we're going to look at more reasonable quotes. And of course, if the price is right, we might not have prevailing wage to deal with, might be able to get it for a lot, for a lot less. So what we may do in the Courtyard Plaza is identify the most critical areas and just look at replacing those to minimize our costs. That is part of the garage property.
Roger, City.
It's a parking authority's property. But as you know, we're the stewards of the system.
See the steps, steps are no part of it.
The steps have been replaced by the property owners. In fact, the property owners, one side, the author of that letter, they've replaced all of their sidewalks and, you know, but participated in the step repair as well.
Are members of committee invited to this meeting that you're going to have with the union?
Certainly, council members are welcome. And I would imagine you would want to have a committee named by the mayor of people who would participate in that meeting.
What is?
We have nothing scheduled. Did you see the cover letter I gave? That basically says until I talk to you, that is the council, then I'll follow up with them.
Well, the committee was, would it be the same committee that dealt with?
You had Mrs. Capora, Fabian, and Kenny.
Kenny.
You were the three for.
Negotiating committees. I would think it would be.
If you guys are willing to talk to.
Unless they wouldn't want to be on, if that's, you know.
Wouldn't the garbage committee best be able to explain the intentions?
I'm fine with that. Mrs. Capora, if you mind swapping out and having Richard and, that's fine.
Yeah. You can't have more than three people there, that's the issue.
That's fine.
Long as it's upon Ted Akal and I'll order for it.
I'm going to clear it up with these guys.
Parking spaces in front of the bulletin, I think you sent a letter out.
Yeah, we're going to be getting rid of those meters in front of the bulletin and be swapping out the signs here soon.
The signs are being made right now. As soon as they're ready, we'll flop the meters and that'll happen.
You know, you don't own meters in front of the bulletin. The owners of the, of the building there, they historically parked in the front and people trying to get in with ads in that couldn't even park there because they were parking there. Now they're forced to park on their property, so, you know.
What we're doing, Mr. Miller, is exchanging the meters for the ability to run ads in the bulletin. It's a public partnership, if you will.
You're going to have the owner parking there again, I'm telling you.
Well, his fee will be the ad space that we get for.
I wonder if we could eliminate some of those meters in front of Holy Family Church while you're.
Can we get ads in the bulletin?
They don't pay on Sunday.
Well, maybe exchange that for a few prayers or something.
I think we ought to pray for a hailstorm.
We better get rid of meters. I can suggest about eight of them.
Where?
Right outside the window. They get used to it.
No, which one?
The ones that we have in our parking.
Hey, Joe, I could, oh, you might. Hey, Joe, I could, oh, you might reform.